Let's, September 19th, let's call the council work session to quarter. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
I'm sorry. Mr. Lind, Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Motion to approve the agendas proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the agenda. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. We're here today for the discussion of the agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of Highway 63 from Newell to Jefferson Street through our engineer, Mr. Eric Thorson.
Eric Thorson, City Engineer. I think I'd like to first kind of recognize Noel and his staff had a lot to do with this, my staff, Jeff Salton, the audience, also our consultant, the econ has some folks here and even has representation from Minicog. So, a lot of people have been working on this Highway 63 project for a long time and we're finding getting closer and closer to construction. So, we do have the city-state agreement, which on the council agenda night, which spells out the costs that the city and the state will share in the project. And just wanted to kind of go over some of the numbers with you. They're large numbers, obviously, but it's also a very important project for the city. First of all, we're back to, it looks like, three projects now to finish up from Newell to Jefferson. The DOT has decided to split their project again. So, the first project from Jefferson to Franklin will be bid in December, and that's most of the downtown area, of course. That will be done under traffic, so there'll be detours and probably working one side to reconstruct it and keep two-way traffic on the other side, so using First and Mullen through the downtown area. So, that'll be done under construction. There's lots of businesses in that area that need to have access. So, they've done a pretty extensive job with the DOT in developing staging plans to make that happen. The second phase will be the overpass phase, we'll be replacing the underpass. That most likely, right now, the DOT thinks will be led in March or April of next year. And that will involve a detour. The highway will have to be closed. The detour will be on Airline Highway to Airport Boulevard to Highway 218 and then back into town. And that will, again, hopefully be let spring of next year. And then finally, there'll be an enhancement project that the city will let. There are some enhancements that will be constructed during the DOT projects. A lot of the ADA ramps at the corners with the decorated bricks and that sort of thing will be in the project that the DOT is doing. But then there will also be another project that the city will be doing to add some, a portion of a bike trail and other enhancements that go along with the project. We'll probably let that in December of '17 or January of '18. Most of that work can't really happen until you get a lot of the construction done anyway. So, next year's, we'll be starting some construction, so then by 2018, we should be able to start working on some of those enhancements. So, remember, again, there'll be three projects. On the spreadsheet that you have before you, the first box up at the top is the Highway 63 project costs from Jefferson Street to Conger Newell. Again, that's going to be letting, two lettings. We'll be doing new streetlights from Jefferson to Franklin and new streetlighting from Franklin to Newell. We'll also be doing some sidewalk work beyond the ADA improvements. The DOT, we're replacing a lot of sidewalk along the corridor, and we thought it was best to fill in the gaps that they're not doing anything with, so we'll have all-new sidewalk along the entire corridor. Next item is the overpass and pedestrian accommodation. On the overpass, there'll be accommodations for pedestrians and a trail, and the city is picking up that cost. I'm going to have to switch my reading glasses, we lost some light here. Next item that's included is the recreational trail from Franklin to Dane, and that will tie into the trail that will be on the overpass. And then if you just glance down in the enhancement project, then there'll be a piece of trail put in from Parker to Conger, and that will complete the trail system then along Highway 63. We'll also be doing new bridge lighting on the Mullen Avenue and First Street bridges. Right now, that's a combination of Mid-American-owned lights and city-owned lights. Mid-American would prefer to not own those anymore, so we're going to have all-new lighting put in, and that will be owned by the city and maintained by the city. And of course, it'll be LED and the latest lighting that we can get there. There are also a lot of storm sewer improvements in this project. This will help alleviate some flooding along the highway corridor. The largest part of that is there'll be a new pump station located near the Minat's ready-mix plant, and that will help pump water over the levee system when we have high water in the river and reduce flooding in the intersections with Jefferson and Commercial of First and Mullen. And also, then, there'll be some storm sewer work done from Franklin to Conger Newell. Those are the city's share that are in the box here. That's actually figured out by a formula that's used across the state to determine how much the city pays and how much the DOT pays for stormwater improvements. Also, if you remember, up on the northern segment there by the underpass, there's a pedestrian bridge that currently is there. With the overpass, that will no longer be there, and we will have actually a large box culvert, be a short tunnel of about 75 feet that will replace that bridge. The city has to pay for that. Also, during the work, the DOT will be reconstructing intersections all the way along the project. And at Franklin, Jefferson, and Commercial, they have to come back a ways on the side streets, and it only leaves about 100 to 150 feet of street that wouldn't be reconstructed, so we're including the reconstruction of those mid-block areas on those three streets in order to make that new. And finally, there's a lot of old sanitary sewer through this whole corridor. Some of it is in excess of 100 years old. So, most of that is going to be replaced because it's all underneath the paving, and we want to make sure that we don't have to go back and tear up new paving to replace sewers sometime in the future. So, that's a lot of what's included in the city-state agreement. The enhancement project then will include enhancements along the whole corridor, including that trail section. And then we also will have an on-call engineering contract for our consultant. Since they've done a lot of this design, there will be some questions that will come up throughout the length of the project or interpretation of plans or things like that. And this is done on an hourly basis, so this is just an estimate of that cost. Hopefully, it won't be quite this much, but we need to include something for that. So, the total city costs, again, these are estimates at this point, are $9.3 million. The staff has done a great job of securing funding for this project. We have $7.2 million in federal aid that's been secured. We have to match that with about $2 million of city funds, which are coming out of general obligation bond funds, and we have about $1 million of that already in place, and we'll be requesting additional funding in the next couple of years. And finally, the sewer fund will be paying about $1.1 million in sanitary sewer funds for the sanitary sewer work. You'll notice that's a little bit more than what the estimates come out right now, but you have to remember, these projects aren't going to be let for a while. And there's also probably undoubtedly going to be some change orders when we're working through this older area of the community. There's, a lot of things have been discovered, but there may still be some unknowns. And it's just the fact that these lettings will be taking place in the future, so we have to allow for some inflation and things. So, I think we're well-funded for the project. We just did a little funding summary over on the right side of the page, kind of listed again the funds the city has secured, and then tells you what the DOT is going to be putting in is $22.4 million. So, the total project is going to be real close to $33 million. And again, it's going to spread over probably about at least a two-year period, if not maybe a three-year period. Construction would start next year, of course, on the first phase and extend through 2018. And I would be pretty surprised if we didn't see some construction still going on in 2019 to wrap things up. So, it's going to be a pretty large project. I think we've got everything pretty well-worked out, continuing on some design work and that sort of thing, but we do need to get this city-state agreement approved and get that back to the DOT so they can proceed with their December lighting for the first phase. So, I don't know, Noel, if you had anything you wanted to add?
No, I don't have to say.
Okay. If there's any questions.
Counsel?
Eric, what exactly is a pedestrian single box culvert? Could you sort of explain that?
That's going to be a large box culvert that will be going through the embankment where the overpass will be, and I believe, maybe Jeff or Doug or somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's about 14 by 20. Is that correct? In size. So, it'll be pretty large. It's about 75 feet long. It'll be well-lit, so, you know, it'll be as safe as we can make it. But in order to still have that pedestrian crossing there that currently is on the bridge, it will have to be a short tunnel through the embankment that's built up for the overpass.
Okay.
Just right about where the pedestrian bridge is now.
It'll be about the same.
The overpass. Set up so we can see straight through it.
Yes, actually, we had the consultants do some renderings, and the side streets there will actually be at the same level as that pedestrian underpass, so you'll be able to see right through it. And again, it'll be well-lit. We have lighting in it and at both ends of it, so trying to make it as safe as possible, but still continue to have that pedestrian crossing there of the highway.
Any other questions?
Steve, yes.
Mr. Chairman. Eric, so following up with that box culvert, do you have any idea, or does some of the folks, your staff, have any idea how that would compare to a elevated crossing? And I guess, you know, the reason I'm asking, it seems to me those things are notoriously used by vandals and misfits, and, I mean, they're not a good thing. And so, I don't know if this is 250,000 versus $1 million being the alternative, or is there an alternative?
I'm not sure that there's a real good alternative to this. Actual overpass, I think, has to be, is it about 20 feet above the railroad tracks, I believe, for clearance? And then you have the structure above that. So, it's going to be a pretty high structure. It's going to be definitely a different appearance out in that part of the community. And so, to go over that with a sidewalk would get us up pretty high, and it would take a pretty substantial structure to do that. And then, of course, in order to make it ADA accessible, you'd either have a pretty large series of ramps with flat spots or an elevator or something on each end to make that work. This will be pretty much at ground level right through the embankment. And again, the way it's positioned, you'll be able to see through it from the side streets. Police department will be able to drive right up along the streets and be able to see the whole thing. And again, we've, going to have well-lit, and it's going to be pretty large, 14 by 20, you know, is going to seem a lot bigger than what you might think. We had some renderings done and showed a person kind of drawn in there, and there's a lot of room, so I think it should feel pretty open.
And I'm sorry, where exactly did you say this was going to go from to?
Well, there's currently a sidewalk that crosses the highway, and it's where the bridge is now. There's a pedestrian bridge there. I don't know if you remember, it's been hit several times in the past by overheight vehicles. And so, in order to replace that, it'll be in basically the same location, so it ties in with the existing sidewalks that are already there.
Okay. And then, on the pump station, Jefferson to Franklin, I thought we did some of that with some of our previous pump work since '08. Is that an area that did not get anything?
We did not. This is a new pump station in a new location. They also will be doing some work on the existing pump station on the north side of the river. That'll be some rehab and some work done to that one, but this will be an entirely new one, which is different than the other eight that we worked on after 2008. So, it just, again, will help us a lot during any flood situation and hopefully minimize the flooding in those intersections. They seem to flood out pretty frequently, so.
That'd be down by the new Hawkeye development, Grand Crossing there.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Tom?
On this storm sewer from Franklin to Newell, is that going to include like the Burton Creek where it's continually giving bombs leaking into 63? Is there anything that's going to be part of fixing that?
Well, actually, the DOT looked at several alternatives. They looked at continuing to have the underpass and continuing to have an underdrain system there, and it was going to become pretty costly to maintain that. There still will be an underdrain system there, which the DOT is going to pay for. The groundwater there has been artificially drawn down ever since that underpass was designed and built. So, if they just get rid of that underdrain system and the pump station that's there, the groundwater will come back up, and there's been quite a number of homes that were built since that time, and they don't want to have any problems with flooded basements or anything. So, but in looking at their alternatives, they determined that over the long haul, based on their maintenance costs, it would be cheaper to build an overpass and then get rid of that water problem that we continually have there at the underpass. So, the storm sewer that's included in the project will be intakes and things that are along the highway project itself.
Eric, one?
Anyone else?
One final thing. With discussion, there's been on safety cameras and that, wouldn't it be something to put a camera so that this box culvert would be subject to, you know, that being one of the areas where cameras could be?
I think we could certainly look at that and see if we could make some provisions for that. We could take a look and see. There currently isn't anything, but there will be power there because we are going to have lights, so I think that's something we could probably pretty easily look at. We'll, I can see the staff taking notes, so we'll definitely look into that and see what we can do there.
Anyone else have a question?
Eric, I'm assuming that the underpass will be filled up to ground level as we know it over there? Yes, no?
Yes, it'll be filled up to basically where the railroad tracks are now.
Okay.
And then, so that'll, it's going to look really different. I mean, it definitely will kind of fill things in there. The, of course, the work of filling that up, removing the railroad bridge and all that has got to be done on a pretty short timeframe, and that's what the DOT and the railroad are still negotiating, which is why the project has been split again. They still have a few things to work out on that.
Okay, I've spoken to some people in the DOT, and we've talked about dredging the river, although they say it doesn't really work. And one of the problems was, is what do you do with the sand? Wouldn't this be a perfect time to dredge the river and put the sand and fill up that hole?
I don't think that would be the type of material that would work for what they're going to do.
Isn't sand sand?
Well, I think. For fill? I think the type of material that they would use would compact more than the sand, so.
So, they'd do it with dirt more so than sand?
Yeah, they'll be bringing in borrow.
I know waste manager, or the landfill is going to be digging a new cell, and they're going to need a place to get rid of that dirt, so maybe we can work together with the county and.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I don't know if Jeff or Larry or Doug, if you guys have heard anything about what the DOT is going to do for a borrow site. We've had a lot of meetings, but I don't know that that's really come up, so.
Go for that MSC technology, the granite, it's a granular material. It's got to be.
Jeff, would you come to the microphone, please?
Sure.
So, we can.
Yeah.
I'd like to get a question.
Jeff Bales, Associate Engineer. The fill for that granite material, I've talked to the DOT, you know, that's specified as granular. It's got to be certain specification. I mean, it's something that, you know, the contractor can provide. I mean, you know, on the segment from Conger Newell to Donald, you might recall, we crushed some material out of Airline Highway there. We took the pavement material, we crushed it down, and then we reset that as a base, so, I mean, that could be looked at as a possibility here, too, but that's something the contractor has to, you know, make provisions and plans for.
Okay.
So, but I think a sand would just, wouldn't fit the gradation requirements for the fill that's needed for the MSC walls.
I still. Thank you.
I have a question. From a standpoint of the houses in that area, are there going to be homes impacted and then also the noise level during construction times? Because I live over in that area, and I'm just kind of curious as far as what kind of noise is that going to generate?
I don't think there will be really be any impacts to homes during the construction other than the noise, and certainly there will be some of that. They have to abide by the same noise ordinances as anyone else. Now, that doesn't mean the contractor might not come and ask the council for a variance to that, but that would have to come before you if they do choose to do that. I suspect that with the timeframe involved, most of the work will probably occur during the daylight hours unless somehow weather strikes and things really get behind and they might want to work longer hours or, but I don't think there's any provisions in there for night work or anything that I'm aware of.
Eric, also, some of the neighbors there in that area bounded by a Broadway going up to, like, Parker, and then Parker over to Logan, Logan down to the river, and then back over again to, like, Oak Street there. They're concerned about, and it looks like there's two different phases, one and two, and are there going to be, there's going to be a different type of detour in one versus two? And are those detours going to impact that area that I just outlined?
Well, the, again, the first phase, which is going to be let in December and will start construction in the spring, is from Franklin to Jefferson. That will be done under traffic, so I think the plan right now is to reconstruct one side of the road, like, reconstruct Mullen, and then they would have two-way traffic on First. And then when they get done with that, they would reconstruct First and have two-way traffic on Mullen. So, there'll always be traffic moving through the corridor. That doesn't mean that folks won't maybe try to find another route. But then the second phase, where the overpass is, that will actually have a signed detour that will start at Airline Highway and take the, you know, for sure, the highway traffic. You're going to have local traffic that will still come down through the corridor, and we'll just have to try to monitor that if something gets to be too heavy or too much used. But there will be a signed detour to hopefully get most of the highway traffic to follow the detour.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none? Why don't you entertain that?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Got a motion and a second on adjournment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll for Finance?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
I'll move the approval of the agenda and approval of the minutes of September 12th, 2016, as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the agenda and the minutes. Is any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. We don't have any trial requests today, but we do have nine pre-offs. Someone can take all of them, you can split them up, it's up to you two gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, we asked pre-offs to spend over $1,000, build and maintenance, $4,779.50. Purchase installation of windows, shades, and blinds for the first-floor conference room at Five Sullivan Brothers Conference, Convention Center. Central garage, $6,000. Four tires for department loader, 194A05. Leisure Services, $1,500 for four double-row studded ice tires for Young Arenas. Tube 08 Zamboni installation will be done separately by a local vendor. Leisure Services as well, $2,340 for annual subscription for the GoBoard Pro Building software. And Leisure Services, $20,000 for the eight-foot perimeter fence and privacy screen at Leisure Services.
Tom?
For the mayor's office, the amount.
Excuse me, Tom. Do you want to second that?
Oh, I'll second, second the ones that Mr. Jacobs read.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on the first four or five? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion passes. Go ahead.
For the mayor's office, the amount estimated at $2,500 for an expenditure of FY17 Cedar Valley Coalition dues. Sanitation department, the amount estimated was shipping and handling, NTE, $25,000 expenditure, Crush Rock and Roadstone. And for the Sewer Department, estimated amount along with shipping and handling of $4,049.25, plus $200 shipping and handling. Expenditure, replacement parts for number two TAS, transfer pump. And the Sewer Department, amount estimated, shipping and handling of $2,700, plus the $250 for shipping and handling. Expenditure, replacement flap gate for Black Hawk Creek Levy Gate F.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on those last four items. Is there any questions or discussion in regards to those?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. We only have two budget light item amendments today. They're both beyond filed at the city clerk's office, but we do have the bill's payment. The bill's payment this week is $2,164,244.65. That's 2,164,244.65.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the bill's payment. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bills are paid. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have motion and a second on adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
And welcome to the September 19th regularly scheduled City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
All right. Mr. Lind is out of, out of town right now, so he's not able to join us. But right now is the time for a prayer or moment of silence. So you can stand if you want to, or you can sit if you want to. But if you want, please rise for a moment of silence. All right, thank you. We will be led in the pledge right now by Leisure Services Director, Paul Huddy.
Will you please all join me in our pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and what we would like to do is we'd like to move the oral presentation right after the consent agenda, and also the minutes of September 12th, 2016 regular session as proposed.
Second.
And what Mr. Welper just indicated, we are going to move the oral comments up front to give all of you an opportunity to voice your opinions, tell us what's on your mind, tell me what's on your mind as well, and then we'll, we'll get you in and out before we get to our regularly scheduled business this evening. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We have a minute agenda and we have minutes from our meeting. But prior to, prior to having some conversation, I would at least like to give a statement which-
Mr. Mayor, let me do the consent agenda first, then you'll do that. Mr. Mayor, let's, I want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's 1A through B. Within that is the bill's payment. The bill's payment this week is $2,164,244.65. That's 2,164,244.65.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Any questions, Council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Consent agenda approved. Now we'll move to oral presentations, and I would like to read a statement first, and then we also have two people that are here to speak. Kara Bigelow Baker and Pete Miles have requested to speak as well. But good evening, everyone. Over the last couple months, the city of Waterloo has been receiving, has received a myriad of news reports spanning across the country, locally and on the internet. Those articles and videos, although shocking, shouldn't be the representation nor the face of our community. They don't represent City Hall, and they don't represent the best of what our brave public safety officers have to offer this community, nor the majority of citizens that represent Waterloo. And over the last week, Director Troika and I have had some serious heart-to-heart conversations about what needs we have and what needs to take place and what type of support is needed to move this community forward together. Growing up as a child in Waterloo, I've walked the streets and grown up here, and I know for a fact, without a doubt, that we have the potential to be, to be and do better. The biggest room that we all have, including myself first, is the room for improvement. And Chief Troika has also shown and expressed his compassion and love for the city of Waterloo, which transcends for both of us as being more just in, just being employed by the city. And one thing that people need to understand, I didn't become mayor to run away from tough decisions when popularity may be impacted. I was elected to make tough decisions and get to the core of the challenges in order to move forward. And to, to answer the swirl of questions from various unidentified sources, I have decided to work with Dan Troika to address the myriad of challenges internally and externally that we face. And with that said, Chief Troika and I, through community meetings, outreach, best practices, and a dual passion for this community, have began the processes of a community-wide policing plan that will work towards regaining public trust that may have been lost due to some of our shortcomings. But this just isn't a plan that will hold accountable public safety officers. But it will send a message to any perpetrators of senseless violence that takes place in our streets, that enough is enough. And I would be remiss in my duty as your mayor if I didn't have a concern about the uptick in shootings and some crimes that are plaguing this community. I would be remiss in my duties as well if I didn't give support and attempt to work through our challenges that we face. So today is a great opportunity to lead and to move forward with the collective vision of support that I see out here and throughout the community, but is what is needed to become even more effective in gaining public trust and creating a safer community. Therefore, in case you didn't read, I have directed Chief Troika for the next year to only focus on our plan for change for the future. Currently, Chief Troika has dual responsibilities of director for both the Waterloo Police Department and the Fire Department. He and I both agree that at this moment, our focus needs to be on the WPD and him being chief, and Pat Trailer for the time being acting as fire chief, reporting both still to the Mayor's Office. The challenges we face internally and externally are too daunting, in my estimate, to serve in a dual capacity. We have to have a singular focus with addressing these challenges, and I am more than confident that collectively, Dan Troika, the Waterloo PD, City Hall, community organizations, and the community, along with the council, can change the course of narrative by working together for change. And right now, we have during our scheduled time of communication, we have Kara Bigelow Baker. And for those of you that didn't understand, Dan currently serves as Director of Safety Services, giving him two responsibilities, one for fire, one police. It is the understanding that we should be able to have him focus directly on the Waterloo Police Department. This is conversation that I've held with officers, this is conversation that I've held directly with Dan, and this is direction that I would like to see us moving forward. So Dan is not losing his job as of, I don't know, first it was 30 days. Or 30, then it was 60, then it was 90. But I think we have a great plan for moving forward in the future. And for me also, it's awesome to see that people would actually support, support a public servant like you're coming out to support Dan this evening. So it touches me as well as your mayor. But we have Kara Bigelow Baker. If you would, come on down. Pete Miles, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Pete, is your floor. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Pete Miles. I live at 5154 Folk Road. Up until the press conference this afternoon, I had a very eloquent speech all written out, which is pretty rare for me. I'm pretty much a shoot-from-the-hip guy, so I'm like, I'm gonna surprise people tonight. Now I gotta shoot from the hip again. I gotta be honest, my first thought was to look at all of you and go, who's the clown running the circus? Honestly, you are our elected voices, and the way things transpired over the last four days is ridiculous, absolutely appalling. For the amount of taxes that we are paying as citizens in the city of Waterloo, which are already too high, in my opinion. As a matter of fact, I have to sell my house because I can't absorb your guys' wasteful spending anymore that should be directed to the Police Department and the Fire Department to properly staff them, to keep people on the streets and eyes out there, keeping people-
Amen!
-accountable. You need to be out there as our voice in the areas where there's problems, accountable, saying enough is enough, not just sitting behind your desk or in a press release or in a news article. You need to be on the streets with these officers, doing ride-alongs, telling these people, you have got to stop. 2009, I moved to Waterloo, and I looked at my wife and I said, to hell with this city, we're moving. Violence is out of control. I moved from Davenport, Iowa, where gunshots and shootings were a daily occurrence. I did not move to another city for that to happen and not to raise my kids up. When I found out Dan was being brought in as a police chief, my first, and I've told Dan this, my first honest impression was, what's the Sheriff of Mayberry gonna do in Waterloo? In the six years he has been here, every year, crime has dropped, shootings have dropped. Then I hear the news that suddenly you're asking him to resign? Wherever that started, I don't care. I don't care.
Let it, please let him finish. We got a long night to get through, and if we have everybody commenting here, we will be here.
You guys allow him certain amount for budget every year, 125 sworn officers a year. That's 10 less than what we should have out there. National Cattle Congress, I don't know if you guys listen to a police scanner, when you're tying up all your resources at a, at a community event, which is awesome, what's going on in the street? There's not enough guys out there doing the job. I've done ride-alongs, 68 square miles, and you've got 10, maybe 11 guys on the street. You have basically turned Dan into a one-legged man on an icy pond in a butt-kicking contest, expecting him to get results. And he has. And this is the way you treat him? It's embarrassing. You guys need to get it together now finally because the public said enough's enough. We're standing behind him. We're not standing behind him, we're standing behind him! If you guys want another term, as our elected voices, get it together. Give this man what he needs to get the job done and get the first family of crime out of this city, get the first family of crime out of the bars that are causing the problems. The nuisance ordinances that he's passed and, and the nuisance abatements, that's all fine and dandy. But if they're continually on a revolving door, causing problems, what good does that do? None. He needs help to get it done. You are it. We can say what we want to say, but it's up to you to do it for us. That's why we elected you. Thank you.
Mr. Miles, I want to thank you for your comment, and I'm not even gonna ask you to repeat the metaphor you just gave, because I probably couldn't get it right. But, you know, I'm going to do something to step outside of the box, and I'm not, you know, in basic politics, you don't do that. But I'm not going to sit here, and I can't let the council get beat up for conversation, conversation that I've had. So I'm not going to blame these guys, and you know, so I'm just, I'm just being completely clear about it. I'm not going to sit here and let them take a beating for conversations that I've been having with Dan. I don't, I don't comment on public or personnel matters or the issues that we may have had to work through, but I'm not going to sit here and let them, and myself, sit silent and, and not say anything. This was my conversation with a staff member that we need to move forward. We have had great conversations, as I say in my public statement, and I believe that we have a plan that's going to do exactly what you're talking about and move this community forward. So that's why I was placed in leadership to stand up for conversations and working with staff and getting to a certain point, so that's what I'm going to do. Also, with regards to some of the training that we've seen, what would be nice is to take a look at some type of staffing, staffing study, to see exactly what needs to be there. What I'm finding out is we're having a myriad of service calls that are going out through the community. What, what thought, what number of service calls do we have?
Dan Troika, Chief of Police, we handle about 222 a day.
222 a day times 365 are a lot of services, service calls. This is something that has just come to my attention within the past couple days. So that's something that we're going to take a look at as your mayor and working with Dan to take a look at those numbers as well. Next person that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Joyce Wilder. I live at 226 Bates Street, and I just want to say a couple things. I have kids in my house, and I have kids that's not living with me. But those that live with me, when they do things in my house, I'm responsible. But when they're outside of my house, I can't be responsible because we don't know what our kids are gonna do once they leave our house. We can raise them the best way we can, but once they walk out that door, we don't know what's up. We don't know what they're gonna do. So myself as a parent, I just want to work with you, not against you. Because if we get more parents working with and telling things that we see, and I'm one of them, I will call you in a minute and say, hey, I just seen so-and-so shoot so-and-so. But if you ask me a license plate number, I'm gonna tell you in a minute, I'm down on the floor. So I can't tell you. But I'm gonna call, I might be one of those people to dial 911, and you might get several calls from me. But usually when I call, I'm right on time with whoever is shooting. If you're going shooting up Mobile Street, I'm calling. If you're shooting over there on Bates Street, I'm definitely calling. I got grandkids that's all over in Waterloo, and not only my child am I worried about, I'm worried about everybody's child. I'm worried about everybody. Because a bullet do not have eyes, it can't see, and the ones that's out here shooting, evidently, they don't have no training. So they're shooting up people's houses, shooting at folks. It needs to be stopped. That's why I, I love that man right there. I do. I love him. And I'm not just saying, I'm not just saying that because I done had encounters with a lot of the police officers, and I done changed over the years. But for that, I just wanted to say that. And this, I don't know who did our streets on Bates Street, but please come back out and look at them because they are horrible. That's all I got to say.
Did you really just transition and go to the streets on that one?
Good afternoon, Helen Seemster, 4040 Homer Street. I'd just like to say first give respect to our mayor. I think you're doing a wonderful job. I also respect Dan, who has been doing a wonderful job also. It's better, it's better together. We can't do this, and we can't poke and point fingers at each other. We have to do it together. I'm standing because also, it's not just the shooting and things in this city. I own a building over on Wellington and West Second Street. Was a beautiful building, 125 years old, with beautiful stained glass windows, 100 pews that were antiques, had been, we did history on it, had a sister church in Germany. About three or four months ago, first adults went in there, broke in there, stripped all the copper wiring out and broke some windows. We boarded it up, and we do try to keep it as clean as we can. But for the last three times, there's been children from the age seven years old up to 12-year-olds, white and black, that have done over $200,000 worth of damage on that building. They've, they have busted out windows, they have gone in and out. I cannot even, I don't know how we can even board it up. And my, and I'm asking for you as the city to help. I know I've talked to Noel Anderson and I've talked to Western, but I think we need to really, and I understand these children are coming out just at dusk, and they're not even in that neighborhood, they're two or three blocks over. So it's, there's things in this city that we need to take heed to. It's not just the gun violence, but it starts, it's, it's, it's all, it's trickled down to the children. We have adult children that are roaming the streets at 6, 7, 8, 9 o'clock at night. But we can't do this by ourselves, we gotta do it together. And I know the police have come out there a couple of times, and now it's almost a disaster. At one time, this was a dream to, to make that into a community service building for that area, so we could do some things to help that area. I don't know what we're gonna do now. But just like that happened over there, there's other areas that it's gonna happen if we don't come and stop bickering over little things and try to work together.
Latija Graves, 607 East Donald Street, Waterloo, Iowa 50703. And I just want to say that I have a very, very good relationship with the chief, and I know that's not his title, but I still call him the chief. I know that's not his title, but I still call him the chief. I also have a very, very good relationship with Mayor Quentin Hart, and what I wanted to say is, when you go online and you read all those negative comments, whether it's for the chief or against the chief, for the mayor or against the mayor, all it causes is further division. If you really want to see some change, work together. Work together as a community, and you have to do more than say something, see something. You have to be out there pounding the pavement and not be afraid. If you approach young people, because I've done it, if you approach them in a respectful manner, even those that are acting like they don't have good doggone sense, if you approach them and let them know where, where you're headed is going to be the grave or the jail. So you have to talk to them, but again, when they see all the stuff online, all the negativity, all the hatred that we as adults are putting out there, what do you expect them to do? If we're leading them, we're leading them astray. Sometimes it does happen in the home, but the home is where the heart is. And sometimes in that home, they're not getting the love and the nurture that they need. So when they approach me, that's what I'm going to do, I'm going to show them some love. They may, they may walk away and be like, don't know what she talking about. I don't care, because my heart is for this community. And again, until we can stop getting online, posting all that negativity, that gives everybody in the world to see, we can't, we can't accomplish anything, because we're separated. So we have to come together and work together. And anybody that want to work with me, I'll give you my number, 214-3434-319.
I'm jumping, I'm jumping. Kim Bingle, 101 Highland Drive. Mayor and council members, I'm a local radio announcer and had the privilege of interviewing Officer Trelka several weeks ago after the horrible shootings in Orlando and Dallas. During that interview, I along with my listeners heard Officer Trelka share the struggles officers face day-to-day, not just here in Waterloo, but nationwide. Those struggles include racial issues, poor police behavior, and pushing for dialogue between community leaders and police. Officer Trelka did not shy away from any of those issues, but shared his commitment to build a strong team of officers. It was clear he cares for the community of Waterloo. Most recently, Officer Trelka's name has been run through the mud by erroneously written editorial in the Des Moines Register on September the 11th. Clearly, there is a special interest group that is trying to remove Chief Trelka. This would be detrimental to the community, as you know, the Waterloo police and the community are in much better shape with his leadership than before he was hired as people As a public figure here in eastern Iowa, I am committed to getting my facts straight and speaking the truth. Officer Trelka is committed to unifying our community, and that begins in his own home. His wife, five biological children, four adopted multicultural children, and the countless number of multicultural foster care children they have taken into their home can attest to his heart to see the world come together. His pastor, who is African-American, can attest to his, his, his character as well. Beyond his character, Chief Trelka has given countless volunteer hours to the community of Waterloo in support of youth organizations of all cultures that build a stronger community. His strength and character also speak to his fearless service to our great nation, as he is a United States Marine Corps veteran. He has used great courage to lead and to tackle the real issues that face the community of Waterloo. Mayor and council members, with great respect, you know that, uh, keeping Chief Trelka here in our community is the best choice. Because you know, the challenges that we face in this community do not rest solely on one man's shoulders. It takes all of us to make this world a better place. Thank you so much for your time. God bless you all. Thank you, Chief.
Am I supposed to give the name? My name is Daniel Tolvar, I live at 626 Hickory Street. If you want to come by my house, I mean, shared by Smith and Western. Okay, now, nobody's talked about the real problem here, the root of the problem. The root of the problem is one side. I shired individuals illegitimate who haven't been taught right from wrong. So they grow up that way, dealing in drugs, shooting and that. The other side, give, their parents give them the keys to their car so they can go over and buy their doobies and crack so they can have their good time. And some of these girls do some very weird stuff that I hear about. You have to get a little piece of that.
But we're not going to talk about that right here.
I've done that, now. What you, yeah, I'm sorry. But what you are not doing, Mr. Mayor, you're not out in that damn street when the gunfire's happening. This man has to have his officers out there. You're not out there among your constituents, the ones that voted for you, banging on the doors and telling them, you better tell me who done that firing.
Please, let, let him make a question, so.
That's what you're not doing. And if all of you people have not really taken this serious, or you evade it, all you want to do is sit there in your suit, pass it, pass something, spend money, just like this gentleman said. I don't see anything coming good out of what you people are doing. This guy's trying to do something, then you want to ambush him. That's all I got to say.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Tolvar, because you just said a lot. But let's, let's get, please, please, listen, if, if we can't keep it quiet, then we're going to have to clear council, council chambers. You, if you need.
If you want to address the council.
Then you need to step up to the, step up to the podium. But let me address something that Mr. Tolvar just said. Now, a lot of this, I took responsibility at the beginning of this meeting. I took responsibility today in conversations, but I won't sit here and have you say that I'm not out there. They're shooting. You had your chance, you had your chance, you had your chance. Every, just last.
You call me, I'll go out there and see if you're there.
Just last week, just last week, driving down the street in the same neighborhood you're talking about, I looked over and saw about 30 to 40 kids out there, right? I saw one young man out there breaking up a fight all by himself, stuck on the fence, stuck on the fence. I jumped out my car and ran over, got my hands dirty. I, I don't need, I don't, I don't need, I don't need applause, let me tell you. Jumped out the car, parked, and got out there and helped in the middle of those streets to break up that fight. The shootings, my children listen to every night. I make calls. So I do take exception with that, because you don't know where a person comes from. And maybe because I don't televise or put a Facebook post on everything that happens, doesn't mean that there's not caring or concern, or doesn't mean that I'm not there with the ear to the streets. Take a look at two years ago, when it came to putting more officers out on the street. That was a budget that I helped propose with other council members to bring more officers back. The training that was proposed this, this year, that they said we had a lack of, ask any officer in here, that training was placed in the budget to give what we need. So I take exception to that, that folks aren't out there, and you don't know what these guys do on a daily basis. So I don't want to stereotype him, because Steve has on a nice tie and Ron has on a striped one, but folks, folks, some folks, some folks are actually out there working, trying to help make things better through decision. What we have is a situation where crucial conversation had to take place, to get us to the point to move us, where we can do exactly the things that you're talking about. Mr. Cur. Yes, sir, it is, it is his floor right now.
Did you get that card, Mayor? Read that card first, and I'll go ahead and tell you. Read it out loud, so people know what I'm doing.
Uh, God's Advocate and Evangelist Against Injustice, Non-Partiarity Vocal Supporter For Any Cause, Play, Pleading, Speaking Against Judicial Injustice and Individualism Injustice. James W. Cook Senior, you want me to give your phone number?
Yes, 1319-883-8516.
It's your, your floor, sir.
You know, I'm here on one account. I've been abused a lot during the riotings, and also, uh, when I was security out there in Mount, Harbor Mount Village, I was abused by a female, and, uh, like I tell people, I don't hit females, okay? And thing of it is, um, she called 911, the officers came out, and so anyway, I was abused by them, but I was humble. I'm a humble person, okay? And thing of it is, um, I'm retired detective sergeant for our new police department, okay? I worked 16 years, okay? And, uh, when I got hired, I walked east side and west side beat downtown for two and a half years, okay? Public relations. Then I got promoted into the operation where, like forgery division and so forth, handling robbery analysis and fingerprinting. Then from there, I got promoted into the investigative part, homicide, suicide, shootings and predators, et cetera, et cetera. Then when he did get a new chief, he went to Spine and Shining Partiality, so I got into Internal Affairs. And like, I don't show partiality for nobody. And, uh, my dad always told me that if he or mom broke the law, arrest him, okay? And, uh, believe it or not, I did arrest one of my sons, okay? I showed no partiality. Now, what I'm here to say is that, um, I did make a report to Chief Trelka, the mayor, Internal Affairs, and, uh, I appreciate Chief Trelka, he came out to my residence, talked with me, okay, and everything. And so that was a plus, okay? So what I'm saying in essence, when you got a job to do, you can't be taking care of this place, that place, and the other place, like, uh, praise God, whom all blessings flow. Like he says in the Bible, how can you take care of somebody else's house, you can't take care of your own? And so the whole process I see is that he, like one guy spoke, he should be right here in the police department, taking care of all the entities, because we got some good police officers, don't get me wrong, okay? But thing of it is, when you, when you're supposed to be professional, what you have to do is be humble, okay? Like God said, be humble, you know? Turn the other cheek. And I've turned, turned a cheek a whole lot of times, during the riotings and everything else. And, uh, I even worked at West Side School for six years, got hired as a hall monitor, but they put me in charge of the kids, and I was done the counseling. Also, I even counseled councilors, you know? And, uh, and so anyway, to make a long story short, uh, Chief Trelka, the card that Mayor Hart read, I'm here to help, okay? I do a lot of evangelizing, I talk to a lot of young people, can't save them all, but you can save a few, okay? And I'm here to help. I, I can, anything you want me to do, hey, I can do it, all right? Nothing too strong for me, all right? I, I grew up in this town, you know? And I was born at the Pine Crest, used to be the old St. Francis Hospital, you know, and everything, and so forth. But anyway, to make a long story short, um, I played sports at Eastside, football, basketball, and track. I got entered up to Eastside Hall of Fame, okay?
Mr. Cook, all due, all due respect.
Yes, okay.
As long as I've known you.
Yeah.
Um, we got it, it's the three minutes, and we got a bunch of other folks.
Okay, but anyway, chief, I'm here to help you, okay? All right.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am, it is your floor.
My name's Janil Stuva, and I live at 533 East Gate Drive, Waterloo. And guess what? I live in poverty. Do I care? Do I care who has a nice suit on? Do I care that she's black? Because we all bleed red. Dan Trelka came into this town and took it on 150%. Never batted an eye about all the bad that was going on. He tackled it, along with other things we didn't know about until today. There have been officers at my house, I know there's an officer here tonight that I used to stand on the corner when I was drinking at the bar. And you know what? It was a pleasant conversation. You know what it is today? It's not so pleasant to people. People drive down the street and they see an officer going, and right away they go, oh, what did we do wrong? Oh, I might be, oh, is there anything in the car? You know what? Walk up and shake their hand today. Have a conversation with them. Everybody tells me, when they take off their uniform, they're still an officer. You know what? That might be it. But I'll tell you what, I put my pants on the same way they do. They get a paycheck, you get a paycheck. Stop and think, what is there in this town for these kids to do?
They, you done right.
Nothing. The roller dome is closed, the skate park is closed, there's no, there's nothing. There's 10 officers on third shift, 10, to cover this town. You might get lucky. And I'm going to give you, for instance, last Friday, I have a severely special needs child, and I am very, very fond of him. My respite care provider had to call a police officer on my nine-year-old. Not proud, but he's my son. Called dispatch and told dispatch, I have a runaway special needs child, I live on Midland Street, and I'm not sure where he's at. They caught him at 529 West Donald, and there was no officer. It took an hour for an officer to get there. Where do you suppose my son would be? The lack of officers in this community has got to change. And we, black, white, black, old babies, don't care. I'm not saying you're old, maybe. We have to pull together. It isn't a fact of, hey, you know what? If we make a phone call, somebody's going to come at our house, that's a chance we take. These are our children that are going to grow up in this community. Thank you.
I'm a ministry leader at I Hope Mission's base here in Waterloo. This is a quote from a great man, Dr. Martin Luther King. "We must learn to live together as brothers or perish together as fools." And so what was going to be a defense for Chief Trelka, a good friend of mine, I'd actually just come here with a heart that's, that is swelling with Thanksgiving for your new decision, Mayor Hart. And I appreciate you, that you, uh, that you look into the community, you hear the voices of those crying out, and you listen, and you had actually put that quote, 2014, and I just, uh, I appreciate that you are a man of your word. It's very seldomly we get politicians that stick to it. And secondly, I'd also just like to thank God, for he answered prayers, for I prayed many nights that your heart would be changed, that the heart of the council would be changed, that chief would stay, and, and that's an answer prayer. So I thank God for that. And I also just want to be a voice for all of us that are in this room. There's a lot of wisdom here in this room, there's a lot of wisdom sitting up there in the council. And I, this is all I have to say before I close, is, uh, many years from now, when we are gone, and others are sitting in the seats, when we face the same situations, the same consequences for the actions of the streets, what can we do to think ahead and to the, the other person that's going to fill our seats today? How could we think ahead and predict and change and bring unity in our streets, again, unity with the people of the churches, the people of the city? If we can answer that now, then we have the ability to change the future. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good evening, Mayor and Council, in the public. My name is Bruce T. Kazzler, the 501 Sycamore Street, Waterloo. I'm living prime example of one shooting is one too many. I want to say too, if you like something in the city, work, going on, call me, try to help, don't be a complainer, be a helper. Get involved with the Boys and Girls Club, with Mayor Hart's, Heart for the Community programs, with the school as a mentor, get involved with the kids, the youth, it involves the future of our nation. Thank you Kenny for making comments. Good bless you.
Alright, thank you.
Hello, I'm Lynn Neal. I live at 514 King Bard Boulevard, Waterloo, 50701. I love the fact that this hall is full tonight, the fact that just a week and a half ago, we had quite an event, when Detective McFadden was here. Many of you that are here were there, but many of you were not. So if, like Latanya has said already, that you would like to look how to work together, or Pastor Seinster has said the same, then the next time those follow-up meetings come out, please all be there.
Yes.
They are wonderful events to how to work together, how to build bridges, how to recognize, you know, the chief was there, the other officer that went to North Carolina, the training officers were there, the Cicero coming in, just really good beginnings. Now, this is just a supposition, because I know Quentin, when I worked at the school where his children go, and I've worked with his wife. So, I could not believe Friday, that this is how it played out. You don't take the trip to North Carolina, you don't take, the officers coming in, like you said, built in a budget two years ago, you don't have that positivity built around a future plan, and then say, you're done.
Right.
Chief. I think the point is, it says, you asked the hard questions, those hard questions needed to be asked, between you two. And what I've heard you say, is that conversation was between you two. Where it came out from there, none of us know. None of us know.
That's right.
So then, media? Media? Then, you know, I don't do computers well, but do Facebook and all those things, it has taken on wildfire. Let's go back to the point that Quentin already shared, Mayor Hart already shared, this is a beginning to work together. The chief said, he's on the job, he's on the job for the Waterloo PD. He's back to the one focus, where we know there's things needed on all sides. I've been a social worker in this community for forty years, and I've always been on the east side. I know there's things to be done. So, I just thank you for, what I hear is different than I feel like many of you have heard here, there was no purifying, there was let's get working together. If I'm wrong, you can correct me.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch, I too had a speech made up there, and I had to tear that one up. But, but anyway, I've been in the community, I've been through eleven different chiefs, so I've been here a long time. And I'll tell you what, I've had dealings with a couple of them, and when this gentleman came in, we worked on the nuisance ordinance, I'd been in his office, and I was treated a lot different than I was treated when the other two gentlemen's were in office, and I went to their, their office. And I think that I am the only one in town that is still driving the neighborhood watch car. And I would wish that there would be more people out doing that in our neighborhoods. I'm not out there to profile, I'm just for visibility. And I'll tell you, sometimes it gets a little hairy out there. Thank you.
Shari Kama, 1155 Dixon Drive, Apartment One. I relocated back to Waterloo about eighteen months ago, after being on the west coast for seven years, and I could've moved back to any city, in any of the fifty states. But I chose to come back to Waterloo, because this is the second place that I call home. And this is where I went to college, and after I'd come back to visit so many times, this is the place where I thought, in measuring technology, as I run a tech program from the Center for the Arts, our youth did not compare to the level of technology on the west coast, so I chose to come back here. In the midst of coming back here, I met Chief Tralka. I have seen him at so many community events, not in uniform, but fully supporting the community. I haven't felt more comfortable in Waterloo since this time that I've come back. So I know this has nothing to do with you personally, it may be something professionally, and we don't know the ins and outs, so I'm glad you guys had a conversation, but I do want to share this. An individual in Waterloo pulled a gun on my daughter who's pregnant, and I went directly to the chief. He didn't say make an appointment, he didn't say go see the mayor first, and the mayor is like my brother, he sat me down, we had a discussion about it, I gave him a description, and even asked him, to let me see the mugshot of the picture that you have of this individual, because I guarantee you, the picture I have, looks very different. I updated the picture, so that he has an updated picture, so this individual could be apprehended. We are fully aware of the violence that occurs in our community, and outside of our community, with black folks, and white folks, and Latino folks, we're fully aware of it. And we know that we have something that we have to do about it personally, but we just expect for you professionally, to handle it a little bit better. You and your team.
Hi, my name's Joma Short, I live at 722 South Hackett Road. And I moved here about a year ago, from Kansas City, Missouri, and before that, Los Angeles. I lived in different places, but I moved here, I've been here for a year. And originally to plan a church, and so I do work with the arts, I do work with the church. But I came across Chief Tralka and his family, within days of moving here, and I just wanted to come to just personally vouch for them, you know, and just the upstanding quality of his character, and the integrity that he has, on, you know, on the force and off the force, the kids that are of different backgrounds, and different races in his family, that he loves like his own, well, because they are his own, but just like his biological kids. And, and I also just wanted to say that, being in this community, I kind of wanted to speak to two groups of people, yes, yes, the government, the leaders and the officials in government, but then also to the citizens, that are, you know, black and white, and different races, about going forward and really being unified, because we can't... Yeah, because if we really want to see a change in this city, me being someone who came here and has only been here for a year, is I have witnessed a lot of things. Yeah, I'm a young black woman, there's been so many times I've been racially profiled in stores, and not, not from the police officers, but just from people and citizens, which I've been in bigger cities before, I haven't really experienced that that much, and I'm like, wow, I, there's a lot of racism here. But, but that's, but at the same time, I don't hold that against anyone. You know what I'm saying? It's just, it's just a fact that we live in a society full of broken people, and if someone's gonna be racist, I'm not gonna pinpoint my anger, my aggression towards one person who happens to be white, of that, of that same race. And so I'm just saying, going forward, you know, for, for the African Americans in the room, or people of color, who have been offended, to not hold chips on our shoulders, and to really try and be unified going forward, so that our community can be unified and be whole. But then also, to the white people in the room, that we need to be aware that there is a problem, you know? It's not like, oh, I live in my own world, and because I'm not affected, there's no problem. There is a problem, it's real. And so, when I go to the store by myself, it's a little bit different than when I go to the store, I go to the store with my white husband, you know? And so, people treat me different, but that's just the world we live in. And so, for us to be unified going forward, I think that, you know, we need to be, as everyday citizens, vocal in our families, in our churches, any place that we have influence, and not just, you know, come together in these rooms and, you know, say all these pretty things, but actually live it out, and get to know people who are different than you, and get to know their families. And then also, be vocal and stand up. If someone's being, you know, ignorant or racist by you, vocalize, they know that's, it's not right, you know? Let's handle this differently, let's handle this better. And so, yeah, exactly, be humble. And so I just wanted to say that, and then also just say that I really appreciate chief, and with all the drama going on in our nation, I felt just really safe with his leadership, and so I'm glad he's here.
My name is Andrea Anderson. I reside at 912 West Seventh Street, Waterloo, Iowa. I do not know the chief personally, and I understand everyone here has their opinions of support in the matter, for him to stay, but I have a bit, slightly different opinion. I am the mother of Malcolm Anderson, who was assaulted by the police. Under the chief, I have not seen anything change with the officers, I have not seen any reprimands with these officers. Certain ones of these officers are, have a lengthy history before what even happened and occurred with my son. My son was walking home in the park, he saw somebody get stabbed, he took the shirt off of his back, and placed it on the wound of a total stranger. Take the man in his car, my son did not have a driver's license, he risked it, I'm gonna help this man, I don't know him. He gets to the hospital, the police thinks he knows something about the crime, he calls his mother. Mom, I don't know what's going on, they want me to come with them, I don't have to come, I'm a minor. Can you come to the police station? I don't know what they're up to, mom. A few minutes later, they snatched the phone from my son, the phone's hung up. I get to the hospital, my son's blood is all over the sidewalk. I ask the police, what happened to my son? Now, you guys paid my son five thousand dollars to be quiet, but you didn't pay me. So, therefore, when I ask the officer, what happened to my son, why is my son's blood all over the sidewalk? Well, your son was resisting. My son? Not Malcolm. Now, if you would've said my oldest son was resisting, I would've believed you. But Malcolm? No. I said, I don't believe that. Well, he tried to scuffle with us, so, we, you know, he kind of fell on the ground. Fell on the ground. Can I go back here? No. Officer steps in front of me, and tells me that I cannot go back to my minor child, and check and see how he's doing. Meet me at the police station, he's going to jail. For what? So I get to the hospital, I get to the police station, to get my son, and when he comes out, that's not my son's face anymore. That's not what my son looked like when he left to go play basketball. But I get told that he was resisting arrest, which he was not. And I'm supposed to have faith in the police department? When these same officers are still out on the streets? The same officers? These same bastards that ride by me and smile when I see them in the street like something is funny?
Ms. Anderson.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We got, and we got a, we got a...
I don't have, I don't have any faith in that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't feel comfortable, I'm scared when I don't know where my son is. Do anybody feel that? That I don't know, my, my son with no criminal record, that's a grown-up twenty-year-old black man, with no criminal record. I'm scared for him to go outside, or I'm scared because I can't pick up the phone at night if I don't know where he at? Because I'm scared that one of them gonna do something to him? I shouldn't have to be that, so if I came up to a police officer, and knocked him down to the ground, I'm going to jail. Because that's assault. So my problem is, why are they not in jail for assaulting my damn son?
My name is David Goodson. Need address or anything?
Yes, sir.
226 Camel Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa, 50701. I come to try to address specifically the chief and law enforcement. Chief Tralka, seems to me, that since you gonna be around, you have a lot of work to do. Now, I, I won't, I, I'm the kind of person, I have to give accolades and credit where credit is due. So, while I'm not gonna throw chief totally under the bus, I do want you to know, I question your leadership. So, this is what I mean. Chief, other people said some of the good things that he's done, and I think he's a nice guy. I've met with him several times, I've interacted with him chilling at many community events, and he's a nice guy. Chief Tralka called into his office, myself, Minister Mike Mohammed, Marvin Spencer, because he wanted to do a good thing, there were some young black males in the community that had been identified by some of his officers, as causing problems, probably carrying guns and so forth. So, he called us in, and we met, and we decided, and this is a good effort, we decided that we would try to talk to these young black males, before they ended up getting arrested and going to jail. That's a good effort. When I was called in by the Department of Justice, to talk about law enforcement here in Waterloo, at that time, I said that, Chief Tralka, I've known most of the police chiefs for the last twenty years, and Chief Tralka, what I told Department of Justice, is our best hope, to bring about change in this, that's what I said then. I'm not saying that now. I don't feel that way now. I feel that chief is a good guy, a nice guy, you have a nice image, you've done some community stuff, you've brought in people, that's all the good stuff. But you got some police officers making you look bad. You have police officers on this force, making you look bad. Because in, in most spheres, you look good. But when it comes to dealing with your officers, now, I own a small company. Own a small company. It's not big as the Waterloo Police Department. I have thirteen, fourteen counselors, working with some of the same so-called bad kids. I guarantee you, if any of my counselors treated any of my kids, half as bad as the officers treat our children, they ass would be fired today. So, chief, I say to you, as Chilling said, nothing personal against you. I've sat with you, I've talked with you, I've met with you, I defended you in front of Department of Justice, and will say most of those things again, but when it comes to officers on your force, your leadership is in the gutter. You've got work to do. And, and let me just remind everybody, I'm not a police officer, I know a little bit about the...
We got, come on, bro.
A little bit about, but, but what I, what I want to say is, just finally, finally, just, people, remember the basics. Your job is to bring people to justice. The bad guys, the criminals, we know they're out there, bring them to justice. When you get them cupped, and, and under control, don't pull their hair, don't cuss them out, don't beat them up, but chief, you got work to do, man.
And I think I forgot to say at the beginning, thank you for everybody's comments thus far, I think I forgot to say at the beginning, there are three minutes for oral comments right now. So, nothing personal, I'm sorry, but, yes.
Good evening, everyone.
I don't know about that. I don't know about that.
Yeah, you did have a minute and a half today, today.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paulette Nelson, and my address is sixteen ninety-four Mount Carmel Drive. I am a senior citizen, uh, one of the younger senior citizens, citizens in this area, because we come all ages. Okay, we got the young, we got the middle, and we have the older senior citizens. And I've been around since the sixties, okay? And I do know that everyone's talking about the problems in our community. Yeah, they're here, but let's get to the root of the problem. Where, where the children has guns? Where they getting these guns from? Somebody's giving them to them. Where are they getting the money to buy these guns? From drugs? Somebody's giving them the money to get these drugs. Where are the drugs coming from? The politicians is bringing them into the country, go up there where the big guys are, get them, ridicule them, get rid of the system, work with the community, work with the community, get something for the young people to do, like they did back in the sixties. They gave us many things to do, and we did them. Some of us took advantage of that. I was one of them. And we did things, and we learned how to do things right. See, you gotta go to the top with the politicians that's got them boats and airplanes and everything. You gotta go to them, and you gotta stop them from bringing them illegal stuff in this country, where these children get, get these guns and then, and, and, and the drug cartels, all that's the politicians. I'm not talking about these individual ones. I'm talking about these so-called leaders and the one percent and all that. I know what I'm talking about, okay? So I just wanted to say that, and we're gonna work together with everybody, but everybody gotta do it, see? And all that paying people under the table and, and hurting our children and murdering and, 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 and molestation, all that, all kind of evil stuff, no. I have spoken.
Yeah, 'cause I was wondering, uh, I, my, I was looking for my vote, but, uh... Thank you. All right, next oral comments. And, uh, if we can, um, um, get a line so we can have a head count of, um, how many, how many other folks would like to, to speak? If you could show me your hands? So we got two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people. So if you eight wanna get in line, that would be greatly appreciated.
Leon's over there.
Yep, I got him. How can I miss him? The last time I asked to take a break to go to the bathroom, he kinda looked at me funny. Uh, why, why don't we do this? So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. You eight, jump in line, and then, um, some of the, the more seasoned folks would like to go to the bathroom right now on council. So do we need to take a recess? Do we need to, or how do we do that, Kelly? Do we just take a short recess?
I'd like to make a motion to recess, Mr. Mayor.
Motion with the...
Recession for five minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we're in recess for five minutes. All of you that would like to speak, I need you to stay right there, and then after your comments are done, then we'll move forward with the rest of the business for the meeting. Uh, do we need a motion adjourned from recess?
Make a motion to reconvene.
Second. Motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are reconvening. Now, it's been brought to my attention, um, from a few folks, any comments that are directly related as B words, S words, A words, or any of those words within the alphabet that is not appropriate for a council setting and part of the rules of procedures that we have at the front of the council policies, which we all identify, or personal or slanderous attacks will not be tolerated, and what we will do is close oral comments down at this point, if that is the case. So that is a reminder to everyone, three minutes, eight people left, and then we will get back to regular council business. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Belinda Creighton Smith. I know. I reside at four sixteen Oliver Street in Waterloo, Iowa. Yes, I have some kinda cold. Um, but I wanted to say that, um, we have prayer warriors. I heard someone talking about prayer and how we were praying twice a day, five days a week for justice in our community, especially as it relates to those in power who, who wield the power and who are misusing their power. Um, when the decision was made, there was rejoicing in my soul, not because I don't like Dan Trelka. I do, I like him as a person, but I believe that finally we were going to be getting something done. Um, it is, it, I think that, all of the comments, and I, I, I hear you, um, but we have to remember that if there is a wound and there's shrapnel in that wound, that wound has to be cleaned out, and this is part of the process of cleaning that garbage and that shrapnel out of that wound so that it can heal. But you cannot heal when we still have these inequities taking place in our community. You have young people on the streets that are gang members, and you have young people who believe that police officers are gang members too, because both of them abide by some of the same code of exes, eh, ethics, and this is very sad, but you don't snitch. And until officers start telling on officers when they're doing the wrong thing to the people they're supposed to protect and serve, we're not gonna change things. Until officers are held accountable and not say that their testosterone is running rapid or they're agitated and angry, if they're angry and they cannot control their anger, they should not be in a uniform. Because they must be held to a higher accountability. That's where I stand, Mayor. That's what we have to do. If it means, and I think, I believe that we need some help. I think we need somebody from outside to come in and help us, 'cause we're in a rut. I believe that we need the Department of Justice and whoever else we can get to help us fix this problem that we're in. I believe that, like Minister Goodson said, when you committed offense against a human being, regardless to where, whether you're wearing blues or whether you're wearing BDUs, you have to be held accountable. In the military, we didn't, those who were, who were fleeing from us, who were waving the white flag, we didn't have a right to kill them. We didn't have a right. And officers do not have a right to harm people just because they have a badge. That's the, that's the problem that I have with Chief Trelka.
My name's Kelly Carl. I live at four-four-four Reber Avenue. Um, and I just wanna say I'm grateful that we live in a democracy where people's voices can be heard and respected, um, and I'm grateful to have Chief Trelka, um, leading the police force. I, um, I'm thankful that Mayor Hart, that you have, you know, heard the cries of the people and, um, and, uh, responded. Um, I, I'm a teacher at Carver, and, um, as a teacher, um, I've been there for six years, and I dearly love those students. And so when I hear people talk about youth and violence, I get emotional. Going to the funeral of one of my former students last year, we need to come together as a community, and, um, you know, I, I believe that what maybe the enemy meant to use for evil, God can use for good. And I believe that we're all here and that it's kind of light a fire under us to bring about change in our community. And I think that the media needs to make sure they have their story straight. And I believe it's the job as the, the council and the mayor and the government and, um, the police, that if the media doesn't have their story straight, that there's clear communication going out to them, because there's so much on Facebook that is destroying this community, 'cause people make assumptions and they speculate, and that does nothing but divide this community. So I ask that you would present a united front, a transparent front. Um, I understand that there's also, um, you know, confidentiality agreements, and there's, and there's things that happen that, you know, if a police officer is being disciplined, that's not public knowledge, and it shouldn't be. But then we also need, like I said, to trust, we need to learn to trust you as a government and as a police force, and, um, we need to teach our kids that same trust, um, and start changing the culture and the mindset and the communication. I had a student a couple of years ago who said he wanted to be a police officer, but that his family would disown him, because snitches get stitches, and he just couldn't do it. Um, and, I mean, that's, that conversation needs to change in the home, and, you know, it needs to change in the streets, and, um, you know, I just, for our youth, I ask for unity, um, 'cause I, like I said, I can't, can't handle to see another child buried, so, thanks.
Thank you.
First of all, I, I gotta ask you for permission to speak, because I'm an outsider. I live west of Hudson. I was raised in Waterloo. I grew up in Waterloo.
First of all, what's your, your name and address?
Kurt Bartlett, eighty-four oh-one Eldorado Road, Hudson, Iowa. I was born in Waterloo. I was raised within two hundred feet of the Sullivan House. I've known a lot of black people and white people in my life, and you know, until a couple of weeks ago, you know, I thought Waterloo just got their problems, they got their name. And then I see in the paper that, the Des Moines paper, that Dan Trelka is being put under the bus. I think Dan is an excellent officer.
Right.
I worked in the military police. I wouldn't work in a civil police job today. I couldn't take it the way that they're mistreated a lot of times. You talk about the mistreatment that they, that you, that people get, but they get it also. They get spit at. One of my friends, when I got out of the service, told me that, you know, he had a black eye, and he said a policeman beat him up, and he said, why? And, and I said, well, why did he beat you up? Oh, I spit in his face. I said, if that would've been me, I would've been more than, do more than beat you up, and that was a friend of mine. I mean, we gotta have respect. Don't expect Dan Trelka, don't, and Mr. Hart, when you got elected, I'm gonna tell you, I jumped up, up and down with joy that we had a black mayor in Waterloo. Because, because I felt that you had the opportunity to reach out to the black community, and with the help of this, this kind of a man, you can do it, and the city can change. The second thing I'm gonna ask in this city is for the people, the Christians in this country, the Christian laypeople, to get together, meet with your police department, see what you can do to correct your neighborhood. They, they can do it, they need help from each one of us. You know, I love Waterloo. I love Waterloo, but I don't think I could drive down East Fourth Street and feel safe. I really don't, I don't. Maybe it's a fear I have, maybe it's a fear that it's...
Maybe, 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 okay, okay, look, sir, sir, if you have something to say...
That's all, yes, that's all.
And then that's why, that's why we've been having implicit bias training.
Thank you, and really proud of you, and...
All right, but that's enough.
Yes, my name is Darryl Caldwell, Senior.
All right, please.
Eleven-twenty-four West...
Mr. Caldwell has the floor.
And I'd like to start like this. My criminal record is this long. I'm a recovering drug addict of thirteen and a half years. Do I appreciate everything that's going on with the Waterloo Police Department? No, I do not. But there are officers that when I was out there in the gutters, helped pick me up and put me on the right path. So all of them are not wrong. You got some good folks. All of them are not wrong. But what I'm here to say today is, is there needs to be a change, and if you listen to Michael Jackson, he got a song that says the man in the mirror. If we look within ourselves and what you are doing is coming from your heart, the man upstairs will take care of it. He didn't say it was gonna be easy. If it was easy, we would not want it. That's coming from somebody that done been there, that some of these officers, there were one officers right there, if I can, that helped me out when I was down and out, that came to me and said, Mr. Caldwell, you are a better man than you are. Do something about it. Along with members from our community, I just don't hold the police department accountable. Our members in this community, y'all need to get up out them four walls...
You gotta address us, Mr. Caldwell.
Oh, I'm sorry. But everybody need to get up out these four walls and get out there and take our community back. I've been looking at Facebook and different social medias all day to day, and if the energy that was used to get on there could be used to get behind this man, to get behind the mayor, to get behind other organizations in the community, you can't tell me we can't take this community back.
That's right.
My thought is, some of us don't want that. Because if we have that, that means you got to go find something else to moan, cry, and complain about, which means you may end up uncovering some of your skeletons. And that's just the truth. I come from the streets, and, and, and that's just where I'm at. You know, I have my differences, and everybody is human. But we need to get some things straight here. We need enough talk. We need to get out and do things. We need to come up with different avenues for our youth. Because some people say we got a lost generation, they're not lost, they're just misguided, because we dropped the ball. And until we do that, it's gonna keep on, keep on, they gonna sit at home in front of them Xboxes, and they gonna hit that reset button, well, guess what? Life don't have a reset. That's what's going on. My name is Darryl Caldwell, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Wheeler, it's your, your floor.
Lawrence Wheeler, four thirty-three Brad Knobur. Email, enemyofthestate, ISIS at gmail dot com.
Wait, 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 wait.
I, I used to be a Christian, and I've become a Muslim, and the thing of it is, I'm glad to see Trelka go.
Trelka's not going.
Because the thing of it is...
You know what, you know what? You got up and said ISIS. You got up and said a lot of things, Mr. Wheeler, and normally, you present to us every night, but tonight, not, not to just be on you, but tonight, this is a little bit far from even what you, you normally express, sir. And I can't let you do that.
I figured if anybody had any hate mail for me, that they can go ahead and send it to my Gmail account. Because the thing of it is, I'm glad to see him go, because the thing of it is, a commander is chief, a chief is a commander.
I specifically said, I specifically said that if there are any more comments from the last eight that are slanderous, that are directly pointed to someone, and you got up here and you just commented on a terrorist organization at the Waterloo City Council meeting, I can't have that. And then you correlate that to, I can't have that, Mr. Wheeler, I'm sorry, but I can't have that. We've had, I don't know, we've had better dialogue, me and you, we've had better dialogue than that.
Yeah, and the, really, they need to take vigilance off the parole cars and do like they used to do, being in California, protect and serve.
Okay, that's a tangible comment. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. All right, we have, we have three more speakers left. We have three more speakers left, and this entire night, it's gotten heated a couple times, right? But overall, but overall, we've been pretty much decent and in order, regardless of how emotional this situation is. So I'm just asking, over the course of these last conversations, could we please, could we please have that same, have that same thought? And I'm not trying to control your emotions, 'cause this is an emotional subject, but please, Waterloo...
Hi, Mayor Cle, um, Queen, how, how are you?
I, I am awesome.
That, that's good.
I'll probably be better at about nine-thirty. Your, your floor, let's give your name and address.
I'm Rosetta Robinson, and I'm just coming for Dan, Dan, Dan Trumpet. I don't know him very well. I just know him from coming to the church. And I got some issues... And I got some issues too. We do need stuff for the youth. There's a main problem, if we have stuff for the youth, they will not be on the streets. And the office that, all the office that did all that stuff need to go. Thank you.
All right. And you are well under your three minutes. We have a couple more presentations, yes?
Kate McGallaga, thirty-eight twenty-eight J Lane, Waterloo. I just want to let you know, Mayor Hart, that I fully support what you're doing for our city and your attempts to elevate the police department. I have to make a comment on Chief Tralka. I read about the latest incident where the man had his hair pulled and was verbally abused when I was in Salt Lake City on vacation. It was in the front section of the paper in Salt Lake City and the headline was Waterloo, Iowa, and then the police violations. And I am just aghast that a police officer can treat a citizen with such unprofessional behavior, such disrespect and, and the level of verbal aggression and still keep his job after everything we've seen in the news about police, police killings and police abuse across the country these last five years or more. I can't believe that it's happening here and that it seems to be acceptable and I just hope that will be addressed.
My name is Billy Simmons, three fourteen Wellington Street, Waterloo, Iowa. I didn't want to get up here and tell my story, but we need to get our stories out here so we can get this thing to work out amongst all of us. Because we are all God's people. We are human beings no matter what color we are and He created us, just like the trees and the flower, they grow together, why can't we?
Yeah.
Okay, my story is, okay, one day, I was in my apartment and this young lady, she suffered from sickle cell anemia. And so anyway, I told her she didn't have to be in her apartment by herself, come and join me and my son. She would take too much medicine and she'll go to sleep, I let her go to sleep there. So one day she told me she was going to her hometown. And so, you audience, and so I thought she was gone, it was like four or five days. They found her dead in her apartment. I was upset, I couldn't stay there. So I was walking down the street and a black car came by, was looking, just looking at me, so I throw my finger like that because I was upset, I wasn't, I tried to, you know? And so anyway, the car turned around, it was a police officer car, and he came, he ran up there and he grabbed me and started hollering in my face, didn't tell me nothing what he wanted, he was hollering in my face and over and over, like five times, he asked me what my name is. Why, he didn't ask me my social security number. And so anyway, I got tired of him hollering in my face and asking me what my name is. So I saw, I should walk off and each one of them grabbed my arms and puts a handcuff on me and they hurt my arm. And in the beginning, when they got the car, the first one says to my son, "Hi, Tanner." They know Tanner, they knew who I was. And then when he went to court, the paper said, uh-uh, they turn, the woman called on time, they pull up. Well, if you turn on the camera time, you pull up, why wasn't you on there hollering in my face and hurting me?
Yeah.
And so then they arrested me, took me downtown and left me sitting in the car in the garage with the window up. And about ten of them came out, just walked out around and laughing. And so they took me out of the car and they put me in, in there and questioned me and stuff. And then they put me in a cell and I was praying and they moved me from where I, as they could see me, down to another one. Now, and then they said they, they, I didn't have to have no lawyer because they would ask for no jail time. I had to represent myself. I'm not a lawyer. And so anyway, they sit there and all the jurors on there, like one or two black ones. One black girl was, was a, a police officer. And so anyway, they took all of them off, except her and all the rest of them come from the country. And they were like, no one's afraid of me. And then I read the paper and one of them said, "I wish it was like the old days, we could just hang you."
Man, you, you, you've gone over, over, over your time.
Yes.
Let me ask, let me ask one question.
Yes.
Were you able to file a complaint at the time?
You know what? I did. And you know what? They sat there and had wrote a paper out there, they thought I was a thirty-eight-year-old girl who had outstanding one. I'm sixty-five.
You look.
I'm sixty-five. And they was pretty, when, when they put, before they put the handcuff on me, they was pretty sorry, I got a stand.
What, what, what I'll tell you right now, because we, we have Mr. Mosley and one other speaker as well, ma'am, there is a complaint process and I think sometimes we don't think, we think that those complaints will go on deaf ears. We have been working together to try to make sure that complaints are being heard. So if you have a, a, a situation like that, please file a complaint and we will take a look into, into the situation.
I filed a civil rights claim and they agreed with the officers.
Okay.
And they had, they had a CD and they showed us, I requested one, but when they were doing this, I mean, we was in front of the car, but the CD had it standing in the back of the car.
Right, right, okay. All right, we will, if you file the complaint with Mr., Mr. Funchess, file a complaint, but if that's the case, please file a complaint and we will take a look at the situation. All right, thank you, ma'am.
And thank you, I just hope.
Mr., Mr.
I'm in five thirty-one, commercial. First, after hearing Andrea and what happened to her son, it nearly brought tears to my eyes to hear the horrific treatment of young black people, black people in this community and throughout this country. And to hear this young lady here, I know many of us may listen and we might even judge and say that, that's, that's, that's not true. It's almost hard to believe. But when you are on the ground and you're dealing with our community, when you're dealing with black people in this society, we hear that constantly. We're hearing that constantly. The only problem is, the right people who are in authority, who are in positions, are not hearing it and they're not addressing these issues. So as the scripture says, that the poor, they have no voice. So we have to hold people accountable today. I think that many in this room today came because you really had a lynching, lynch mob mentality. You came because you probably wanted to address the mayor for the decision that you thought he made, which you don't know what it was. But you really came here to lynch another black man. Who, shut up, just be quiet, be quiet.
Come on, Mike, don't lynch, shut up. Don't shut up, come on, Mike.
You came with a mindset that you cannot accept, you cannot accept, you cannot accept, just as you can't accept this point, which you need to listen. You can't accept the point and that's the problem, you don't hear the cry of those who are hurting in this community. The point is, you came into this meeting today because you wanted to aggressively address the mayor over a decision that you did not agree with. But you don't come, but you don't come to the table when it's time to deal with the real critical issues going on in this community. When you're in leadership as a chief of police, you are held to a, the highest standard. The men under your authority have, you create the culture and the men under your authority have to respond to what you give as an instruction and a mandate. So who else is held accountable if we don't hold the chief of police accountable? Who else is held accountable if we don't hold the mayor accountable or the city council? Who else do you hold accountable when you have people in positions of leadership? When you're in a position of leadership, you have to be held to a high standard. And when you have blind leadership, do you, as the scripture say, when the blind lead the blind, you both fall in a ditch. Look at this community. Look how divided, go read those blogs and you'll understand what I'm talking about when I say a lynching. Go read the words that are being posted all over Facebook, the racist statements. I heard pure racism here today.
Yes.
I heard pure racism today.
Yes.
Go read the blogs. So my point is, that today, that, in this community, has to be a changing of God. If there's not a changing in the department, if there's not a changing in the culture of the law enforcement, this is the least of our concerns. Because people are rising up in these streets today and they are angry. They're upset and we're losing the respect of citizens in this community because of a refusal to give what God gives every human being as I close, and that is justice.
Yes.
That's what this is all about today.
We have a, our final speaker this evening is none other than Mr. Mosley.
Leon Mosley, ninety-nine Mosley Street. I just want to say a couple of things. I called the police chief to come over to my house and me and my homies sit in my front yard every day and right down the street in front of my house was a notorious problem. About twelve kids hang out there every day, stopping the traffic, drinking and doing everything in the middle of the street. And the neighbors come to me and said, "We are not gonna tolerate this." So I called the chief of police and I said, "Will you please come down here and look at this?" He came down, he sat down there for a few minutes, we talked, he looked at it, he got up, went down there and knocked on the door, talked to whoever he talked to. Next thing I know, we saw him leave, come back about an hour and a half, he had some paper in his hand, he took to the house. And next thing we know, in two weeks, they were moving out. We purposely thanked him because we were gonna take care of our problem and I don't know what the results would've been, but it wouldn't have been nice. And let me tell you, sitting on the board of the cattle congress and I happened to go to the cattle congress Saturday and out there just walking the midway, buying food, enjoying the evening. And all of a sudden, about thirty kids started fighting. And I said, "Oh, no." So I jumped in between the two girls fighting, one girl's face was totally bloody, the other girl was steady fighting, they're steady trying, I had to do all I could do to keep them apart, then two more started. Then I saw a girl pull something out of her pocket and I thought it was a knife, could have been a pen or anything. She was trying to stab the other girl. And the police came within two minutes and they ushered them out the gate, but I don't know if they locked them up, but they should've been locked up. Because that was terrible. And then I heard from my friend that Joyce Wilder, that they had shut the place down Friday night because of the kids fighting, they had to close the cattle congress. Now, I'm telling you, that's a, I was really upset because what I saw, not in what I heard, what I saw. And we got to come together with some solutions and I don't know what the answer is.
All right.
But I can tell you a guy, and the mayor, I gave you his name, Charlie Aldrich, highly intelligent, he's my mentor. He's quiet, he solves problems and stuff. You need to get a hold of him and if you talk about solutions, you need to get Charlie Aldrich involved in it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We, we, I, you, forever, forever we have been together, but we have said we are closing this hearing down. I, you know, I, I'm sorry, please, but no, we.
Can I say it next week?
You can say it next week, you can say it next week. I'm just trying to be, no disrespect, no, no disrespect, Ms. Dale, you've been a champion in this community for young people, but it's time to move on. In, in, tonight, before Mr. Welper makes the motion to close oral presentation, I'm going to tell you, for me personally, over the course of nine months, this has been some of the most difficult times that I've faced on a personal level and professional. You know, I'm hearing the outcry of folks within the community that want to see some change and I'm hearing the outcry of community members that are, are not even feeling safe in their own houses. Hearing the outcry of situations of mistreatment. So it's a tough, it's a tough situation. The comments that were made today during the press conference, and I think the chief would agree too, are more than just empty words. I believe we do have an opportunity to, to work harder together. From my point as mayor, I'm going to do the best I can to give the support that's needed to, to do what we need to do out on the streets, to take care of those situations, but also not run away from the challenges that we may face internally. That is the commitment reassured today through the decisions that were made, those are the commitments that I have as well, speaking with our, our chief. So the, the challenge is, it's going to take all of us being actively engaged. And you may not be a person that will be willing to walk out on the streets like Mr. Mosley or Mr. Tovar, Mr. Minister Mohammed, you may not be that person, but there may be other opportunities for you to get engaged somehow because you're right, it's not on just a couple of people to continue to, to make sure we have safer streets. So tonight was a tough conversation, absolutely tough for me, tough for the chief, I would assume as well, but there is a renewed commitment, there's a renewed sense to making sure that change is just more than conversation and community policing is more than just something that sits on the show. So that's the commitment that you've had today and, and we're going to adhere to that as well.
Motion to receive and file oral comments.
Second. Motion's been made with the proper second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, oral comments are closed. Now we als, now we have to take care of the business of the council and for all of you that made us sit here at this length of time, I'm asking you to all stay and hear what we also decide during this meeting. So if you've not been to a city council meeting, please, can we get one of the officers to close the door so no one can leave? If you would leave quietly and swiftly.
Thank you, Mayor, President Hart, I voted for you and I'm glad. Thank you, Chief Dan Tralka, I'm glad of both of you and I'm glad and Mr. Mosley is glad. I have to give the most respect for all three of you and I am so loving you.
All right. I'm pretty sure.
Thank you. Thank you for the sign, but did you make those signs? Are you the one that put those signs up downstairs?
I found it on the table and I don't want it, like it's here.
Okay.
God directs me.
All right.
I love you, everybody, we're all related, we're all creatures, we're one God, we're all family.
All right.
Fight, I guess like that.
Yes, we do. All right. All right, we need to continue to move on with council business, we are in the resolution portion. Please, if you have conversation, please be ushered outside, please, please. If you're having a conversation inside, you're having the wrong conversation. All right. Mr. Schmitz.
Yes, sir. Uh, want me to take three? Three items? Ten? No, I was gonna do you. Item number two is adopting a resolution approving a grant application to the Northeast Iowa Community Foundation in an amount up to fifteen thousand, five hundred and eight dollars to replace ash trees in Bontrager and C.A. Morris Park. Item number three is adopting a resolution approving fee increases for the Sports Flex memberships and sports program fees, together with the approval of the Leisure Services Commission. And item number four is adopting a resolution approving an agreement with Barron's Tate Consulting Group to complete required arbitrage testing for the sewer revenue bonds issued in two thousand and eleven in an amount not to exceed three thousand dollars and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions on these three items? Going a second time, anyone want to comment on these three items? Madam Clerk, roll call vote. Mr. Huddy.
Sorry to delay things, Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director, just wanted to comment. Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director, just wanted to comment on the fee increases. It was reported that this would net $150,000. Actually, it'll net about $30,000. The $150,000 is an accurate figure, but that would be the total revenue over expenditures, just trying to set the record.
Mr. Hudding, since you're standing, will there also be scholarships or anything for those that may not be able to afford the fee increases?
Yes, we do. We, we use the Key Card Program.
Okay.
For reduced rates for those who are qualified.
So, so people that qualify for the Key Card Program, they're not locked out of the Sportsplex, they can also come there if they qualify?
That's right.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hudding, and I'm sorry I missed that Leisure Services meeting where this was discussed, but to what degree did we compare with other opportunities as far as the rates go? I mean, I, I know we did that originally, but did we, did we check that again and to what degree?
Since Mark sat through the whole meeting, I had asked Mark Gallagher to get up, come to the microphone, he did those comparisons, so.
Mark, I didn't even see you here.
I was hiding. Mark Gallagher, Recreation Services Manager. We did, we compared. It's very hard to find something that's real comparable to what we have to offer, mostly the YMCA and the W and Waverly. We're right there with them. We may be a little higher than some of them, but I think we have a little bit different product to offer as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Paul, I was just wondering, $30,000, is any of that going to go towards the, I, I know there's been talk in the past about, are we going to have money for replacement costs and repair costs down the road?
And that's a primary driver behind this request, is so that we can, in effect, bank some money for future needs for repairs and improvements at the Sportsplex. So that's exactly what it's for.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Paul. Paul, one of the things that, you know, Steve missed the meeting, but I was there, but one of the things that impressed me was, is the fact that there had not been any fee increases for the original members. Can you kind of speak to that a little bit?
Sure. This is the, if you started originally, when we first opened almost three years ago now, this would be the first increase that you have seen at this point. And Mark, I don't know if you want to expand on that or not.
We did last winter. We implemented, it was basically $1 a unit fee increase for new members. So our existing members haven't seen a fee increase at all, and actually, our new members started paying the fee that they were accustomed to. They haven't had to increase over time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for sat? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, that, uh, motions, motions carry.
Could someone take five, six, seven, and then actually eight on this as well?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving acceptance of 2016 GTSP Highway Safety Grant of $55,000 for impaired driving enforcement. Number six, a resolution approving 208E agreements with Elkhorn Heights, Cedar Township, and East Waterloo Township to provide fire and EMS protection, and authorize the mayor to execute said documents. Number seven, a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement with Hawkeye Community College to conduct fire science classes at the Hazardous Materials Regional Training Center. And eight, a resolution in support of the nomination of hotel president for the National Register of Historic Places located at 500 Sycamore, and authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents.
Second. Motion has been made with the proper second. Is there anyone in the audience, or council, do you have? Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, could we have Chief Treeler talk to us a little bit about the rates that were negotiated, and item number six?
Chief. Pat Treeler, Chief Fire Services. 208E agreements were budgeted for in this current fiscal year that we're in. We entered into agreement with the three surrounding communities that we serve for fire and EMS, and it was a 3% increase that was budgeted for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No. All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, those, uh, those three items carry.
12 through 14, please, someone. Mr. Welper?
Oops, oh, you started, sorry. I'd be happy to. Number 12 is a resolution approving professional service agreement with AECOM Technical Services Inc. for an amount not to exceed $75,000 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2017 Pianal Bridge Review Program, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Number 13 is a resolution approving the pre-construction agreement with Highway Department of Transportation for primary road improvements in conjunction with the U.S. Highway 63 projects from Jefferson Street to Conger, Newell Street, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 14 is a resolution approving the treatment and flow control agreement with Conagra Foods, Packaged Foods Company, LLC, in the amount of $5,000 per month with an annual 2.5% automatic increase over the next five years, and directing mayor to execute said agreement.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Any questions, anyone? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, thank you, those items carry.
15, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time in ordinance, amending the 20, 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by repealing check, or Title IX, Chapter Two, Section Two Codes Adopted, subsection A, and enacting in lieu thereof a new Title IX, Chapter Two, Section Two Codes Adopted, subsection A, and repealing Title IX, Chapter Two, Section Eight Amendments, and enacting in lieu thereof a new Title IX, Chapter Two, Section Eight Amendments.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Any questions about this item?
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to include it regarding the fire code ordinance amendment.
Thank you for including that. So noted. If you have questions, please come on.
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. I think he said 16. Was that 15 and 16?
Fifteen. Fifteen.
Just 15, I need to talk on 16.
Okay. Well, you already spent like 15 seconds, so we're up at the duck. No, I'm just playing. All right, council, any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No. All right, good, that item goes another week, which probably should. So number 16.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number 16 is regarding the building code ordinance amendment, and that's a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time, and ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by repealing Chapter One Building Code and Article A Building Contractors of Chapter One Building Code of Title Nine Building Regulations in their entirety, and enacting in lieu thereof new Chapter One Building Code and Article A Building Contractors of Chapter One Building Code of Title Nine Building Regulations.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. We have a question.
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. I think this is the one that has to do with a 10 by 20 shed instead of a, reducing the size to 10 by 12. And I, right now, we're at the 10 by 20 level, and we also have some regulations that state that we, that we can't park too many vehicles out in our yard for mowers. If you have a large lot, you have a large mower. The statement's been made that, you know, that they were afraid that they might possibly use it for garage. You could use a 10 by 12, probably with a smart car, if we, you know, wanted to get nitpicking. There isn't any real reason. I've talked to some people, and got contradictory stories about why we were reducing it anyway, because it's been this way for years and it hasn't been a problem. It was mentioned that Cedar Falls and a few other surrounding communities use this as an international code thing. So I'm thinking that if we're going to be like Cedar Falls, we ought to tax ourselves like Cedar Falls. Thank you.
All right. You kind of dropped the mic on that one. You got me on that. I don't even, okay, any, any other conversation? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
All right, we'll pick this item up next week for the third reading.
17.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey, I was going to call you.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time, and ordinance repealing Title Five, Chapter Four Convenience Store Security in its entirety, and enacting in lieu thereof a new Title Five, Chapter Four Surveillance Camera for certain businesses.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Any questions or conversation about this item? Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, this is the item that four weeks ago we talked about, and we tabled for four weeks because we were going to form a subcommittee with, you know, a number of the folks that would be impacted by this, and possibly another couple of council members, some staff. That committee was never formed, and I fully understand there have been a few other things going on, so I could see that happening. But therefore, I'd like to propose that we table, I'd like to make a motion to table this for another four weeks until we have a time to, or have a chance to get that subcommittee put together and get a little bit more in-depth on this particular item.
I think we tabled it for two weeks last time.
Oh, I thought it was four.
Previously, this item was tabled for two weeks with just direction to have discussion with business leaders within the community.
So I guess that goes to the question, were there any, was there any discussion at this point within that two weeks, or do we need to wait a little bit longer to have those conversations? Dan?
Well, from my perspective, there wasn't any discussion, because I sent an email about forming the committee, and I was told we'd talk about it, and we never talked about it again.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, if there, if there was that conversation.
Yeah, because I mean, we never formed the committee, I guess, is what I was trying to make the point of, I was just looking at my calendar, so.
Chief, did we have any, any other conversations with business? I mean, if we, if we need to take a step back, and council wants to take a step back, of course, that, that's, we can, that can be done. But chief?
Dan Trealka, Chief of Police. Lieutenant Fangman answered several questions for business owners. He can, if you'd like to ask him questions about those discussions, he is here.
Lieutenant Fangman, welcome.
Greg Fangman, Lieutenant of the Police Department. Ever since this was proposed in a work session a couple months back now, I have received two phone calls from business owners, with the ordinance did not apply to one of them, and the other guy was just asking about if I was going to be willing to come out and help him do the layout of the security system. And that's the only comments I've had from anybody.
Did you tell him yes?
Yes, I did.
Well, the last meeting, we had, you know, former mayor Manning was here, and we got into a conversation. I know Lieutenant Fangman, I believe, was not here that night.
Correct.
And there were some questions about the ordinance, and there was clearly some conflict between the chief's understanding of what the ordinance said and what the ordinance said.
Correct.
And there were some questions about the ordinance, and there was clearly some conflict between the chief's understanding of what the ordinance said and what the ordinance said. And so I think that was the reason that we were gonna have this subcommittee to have some, and I've got some business people, you know, that have indicated an interest in, in getting involved in this because they're concerned about what impact it's gonna have on their bottom line. I mean, that's, that's ultimately what this is about. Nobody, nobody's opposed to enhancing public service, nobody's opposed to, uh, helping the police, uh, apprehend, uh, folks that misbehave. But the question is, what ultimately is it gonna cost? What ultimately is gonna be the responsibility? And if you remember that night, we got into a conversation about the Kimball Avenue little area there, and would one camera on a pole suffice for the four businesses? The answer was yes. Then as we looked into the ordinance, the answer was no, because each door has to have, according to the ordinance, has to have a camera on it. So those are the kinda things I think we need to clear up and be able to pinpoint before we approve this, in my, in my opinion. So I would like to, in, we can try two weeks. Um, I guess we don't have any holidays coming up or anything. I just wanna make sure that that's adequate time to get this done, assuming, uh, we can get the subcommittee put together. So I, I can send you an email again tomorrow with, uh, you know, the folks I would nominate to put on there, and I don't know if, uh, Lieutenant Fangman would be on there from staff, and I think we oughta have at least one other council member, so.
I think, I think what we'll do, um, uh, Chief, uh, if it is the will of the council, then, um, we'd have that conversation. You have businesses regularly accessible. I think we probably wanna move forward, so hopefully we can get that taken care of within the next, uh, two weeks. But it's up to council's discretion. Mister...
Mister Mayor? Uh, Councilman Schmidt, would it, uh, be objectionable to you to, if we follow through with, you know, approve what you want, to go ahead and pass this at least for the second time? Uh, 'cause it won't pass, I mean, then not suspend the rules?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that, but I would be concerned about, you know, being able to get this turned around in one week, 'cause that would be, you know, the alternative if you're, if you're talking about then coming up next week for the third reading. I'd...
Well, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about following through with your, your idea of having two weeks, uh, in order to meet with business people and that.
Sure.
So approve tonight, um, not suspend the rules, put a two-week deadline before we actually bring this particular one back for the third reading, have some conversation with chief, lieutenant, yourself, which other council member would like to be engaged?
Everybody's looking at me.
No, I'm just looking at everyone. My head is always on a swivel lately.
I don't think you can, you can design a public safety...
So he's on the Public Safety Committee, which...
Yeah, so you couldn't.
Which Ryan has more committees than, so, okay, Mister Powers, so, um, uh, Mister Powers, Mister Schmidt, list of business, some business folks, um, and then the chief, and whoever he decides part of staff, Lieutenant Fangman, um, possibly, uh, will get together. Um, we'll postpone this for two, two weeks. Do we need to do anything procedurally for that third reading? We can bring it back when we want to, right?
Um, yeah, so after two weeks, we can put it back on the agenda, provided that there's no changes to the ordinance.
Alright, so it's at the discretion of the council. So we vote on the second reading, and then, of course, you would have to have a, a motion to not suspend the rules, but it's up to your discretion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote on the motion to pass for the second time.
Mister Powers?
Yes.
Mister Amos?
Yes.
Mister Schmidt?
Yes.
Mister Welper?
Yes.
Mister Jacobs?
Yes.
Mister Morrissey?
Yes.
Alright, um...
Mister Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
And we got a second from Mister Amos.
I thought we were doing a motion to table for...
Two weeks.
So did I.
Oh, I thought if we suspended the rules and said no, then we just bring it back for the third reading whenever we want to.
Yeah, but she would have to come back next week.
Oh, okay.
Mister Mayor?
She'd be on the table for two weeks, then we push it off.
Okay, so there'd be a motion, so, so should it be a motion to suspend the rules?
Um...
Or to table?
We could go back to Mister Schmidt's motion that he made earlier to table for two weeks with the additional language to explore with business leaders.
Well, his, his motion was four weeks, though.
Yeah, I would amend that to two. I never got a second on that motion.
Correct.
The art of compromise.
Yes.
Um, so right now, it should be the motion to table.
For two weeks.
For two weeks.
Okay.
And then we don't have to, so when it comes back, though, there won't be a motion to suspend the rules. It'll just be a motion for...
Approve or deny.
Yeah, correct. That's what we did.
Alright, second.
Okay.
So the motion's been made and second to table for two weeks. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I hope that we're gonna roll call vote.
Um, we all a, so.
So, it's not too late. Alright, um, man, eighteen?
Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number eighteen is a motion approving the change order number two for a net increase of forty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty cents for the fiscal year 2014 Belt Filter Press Edition Waterloo Pollution Control Facility Contract Number Eight Six Nine and authorize mayor and council to execute said document.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Any conversation or questions about this item? Madam Clerk, uh, oh, that's a voice vote?
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Mister Powers?
Yes.
Mister Amos?
Yes.
Mister Schmidt?
Yes.
Mister Welper?
Yes.
Mister Jacobs?
Yes.
Mister Morrissey?
Yes.
Alright, that item carries.
Motion for adjournment.